Good evening. I'd like to call the Daily City Library Board and Trustees' Monthly Meeting, Tuesday, February 28, 2018, to order. Would everyone please rise and say "Pleasure" to us? Pleasure, audience. This is why we're in the United States of America, a free republic, a free stand, a free nation, a free government, and we're here to help. Thank you. If you think we have a roll call, you can have a roll call.
Call. Trustee De Vera.
Present.
Trustee Louis.
Present.
Trustee Logarta.
Present.
Vice President Chubanka should be here momentarily. And President Lex.
Yes, present. The next item would be to entertain a motion to approve the agenda, and I would like... Oh, thanks. I know we need help.
That's okay.
To just exchange one item. Item four, election of officers, I'd like to move to five because I think mission statement of the library board kind of follows the advisory committee report a little more logically.
Okay.
Is there any objection to modifying the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. Would anyone like to move to approve the modified agenda?
So, move.
Sarah Second.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I would also entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting in January.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Moved in seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Okay. Okay, so I'm a little confused about... Sorry, I didn't even pick this up. Election of officers.
Yes, I... I made a modification later, and I neglected to remove that. It's meant to be down in the trustees' report.
Okay, so is there any objection to moving that farther down in the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jalen. Director's report, please.
Good evening, President Lex and members of the board trustees. When we last spoke, I believe I had mentioned that we were in the beginning stages of preparing the budget for fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 20. And the Department of Library and Recreation Services started off with a target of reductions of $269,000. I don't remember my exact words, but I think I left you with some confidence that the bulk of those cuts would come on the recreation side of our department, not on the backs of the library. And I was right. And so far, so far. I mean, we've got a long ways to go. But in our initial review of the budget with the finance director and the budget team and the city manager, we went through the entire... It was about a three-hour session going through our proposed budget. And in the end, when the dust all settled, there were no cuts made to libraries. So the library's looking very much in 2018, 19, and 2019, 20, the way it looks today. We're not adding staffs. We weren't not contemplating, you know, adding hours or services, but we're not cutting anything either. We've cut a lot in the last six years, so that was good news to me, anyway. I went into that fearing the worst and hoping for the best, and in this case, the best is what transpired. Now, that was just the preliminary meeting with the finance director and city manager and that team. We do have a ways to go. The budget's usually adopted by the city council in June or thereabouts. They will probably have a few preliminary reviews of the budget when they'll go over things. There is, from what I understand, a fairly... A large gap between expected revenues and expected expenditures, so, you know, there's still some math to be done before it's presented to the council. But I will absolutely update you the minute the schedule for those reviews and hearings are scheduled at the city council. But that's my short, to-the-point report for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Will there be a study session on the budget?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There will be a series of study sessions. They have not yet been scheduled, but I'll share that with you. And rather than make you go to all of them, because there's usually quite a few, I'll make sure I get the dates specifically for the Department of Library and Recreation Services.
That would be great.
That'd be good.
I would guess April.
Well, that's good news, Joseph. So no reduction in materials or...
None.
Anything at all, huh?
Didn't even cut the fish.
Well, that's because we fund that through other sources, I think.
We try.
Any other questions or comments?
Not at this time. At least there isn't any major cuts. It's just kind of flatlined at this point, so...
Well, that's certainly good news of a sort. The fact that the budget is so anemic, and we're looking at two more years of that, I think is something that we're going to address, you know, later and hopefully in an ongoing fashion. Okay, Lynn, just welcome, first of all.
Good evening.
And to bring you up to date, we've just completed the director's report. And to summarize very succinctly, Joseph said after a meeting with finance director and city manager that at this point, there are no reductions in the budget for libraries.
But can I ask a question, please? With the economy getting better, and we have all these shopping centers now with increased revenue, and, you know, with all the property values and new homeowners, if we get more revenue in in the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, will that let finance kind of revisit our numbers?
I hate to sound like the pessimist, but maybe more of a realist. The gap right now is so big...
Really bad?
And the obligations, especially to CalPERS for the pensions, is so huge that it is highly unlikely that revenues are going to outpace expenditures anytime in the foreseeable future. So we're certainly hoping that it does better, or at least as well as we hope, because that's part science, part art, trying to predict where revenues are going to be a year, two, three years out. There's all sort of modeling in forecasting, but it's a little bit scary because more and more people are shopping online, so the presence of our mega shopping centers seems like it's going to help out quite a bit, but it's to be determined. And typically, the way the sales tax are collected at the state level, and it usually takes about a year of lag time before it works its way back locally. So all of the money that was collected around the holiday season in 2017, we won't see for quite a while.
For a while.
Quite a while.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the trustees area. Item three, report from the advocacy committee. Tricia.
Good evening, everybody. The advocacy committee is actually... Let me update Angela, because she wasn't here last meeting. So Bill had brought to my attention, because I had some concerns about kind of the advocacy of how the board was moving forward overall, in the big picture for the library. And he had mentioned that it would be nice to get some kind of advocacy committee to start off, maybe to get the ball rolling, the gears going, in how we can kind of plan moving forward as a board. And so he asked if I would chair the committee, and then Lily would actually co-chair with me. So we've kind of teamed up together, and hoping that we could get everybody on board and kind of get some better sense and new ideas of how we can move forward on a more positive note. And so Lily and I actually met, because I wanted to kind of get the ball rolling and try to get some ideas thrown out to everybody. So we met back on the 29th of January at the Ceremony Library. They're kind enough to give us some space there to kind of sit down and spread out and get some ideas flowing. So we, you know, chatted back and forth. And some things that we had talked about as far as promoting advocacy in the Daly City libraries was how to gain revenue to support the libraries, you know, to support infrastructure, materials, equipment, and even staff. And one of the ideas that I had brought up was because of Joseph had mentioned it in the city of Berkeley, and that is proposing a tax to put onto the property tax for homeowners. And that would be like a potential tax supplement on property tax to help earmark funds to support the library. Mind you, it would be very minimal to even start off with, because I know tax is, you know, kind of a jab to the heart kind of thing. It's like another tax thing, but it would be, I think, something that would be, you know, something I thought would be an ideal kind of scenario to start off the pot. When I talked to Lily about it, she's a little bit more seasoned than I am in working with the city, and so she felt that increasing the property tax would... Is not very popular for homeowners. And that... She did some surveying once before, and I think it was for the...
No, I worked on the Measure B for Save Our Police and Fire. And that did not pass.
Right.
And that was for fire safety, and that didn't pass. And so I did an informal survey of just my neighborhood for families with kids. Those are the ones that are doing all the complaining. Library hours aren't good enough for our kids. So I asked them, well, would you be, you know, would you like to pay just a little more on your property tax? And some of them said no to me, so...
They shot it down immediately?
Yes.
Did some seem open to that?
When it comes to taxes, the answer's always no.
So it was unanimous, pretty much?
Well, that's just an informal...
Right, right. But that's what I was...
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, when I went knocking on doors for the Measure B, it was mostly seniors that slammed me in the face with the no.
More so than families?
Yes.
Okay.
Families were very supportive on the yes on Measure B. It's the seniors when I went knocking on doors.
Right. Right. Yeah.
I used to, because maybe they're on fixed income, little dollar counts when they're asking. I mean, I'd be happy to pay more taxes, a little more taxes to have...
Well, you know, it is something that should not just be shunned away. You know, it's an opportunity to maybe create kind of like a... How should I say the... Support from doing like a roundtable discussion, maybe at each of the library locations, and get the community involved to get some kind of input.
I think that's important.
And get a feel of what they think about their thoughts about, you know, putting a tax increase specifically earmarked for the library. Because we don't know. I mean, just as a board, we could say, yes, increase the taxes, and we can say to the council... The council members can also say, you know, increase the taxes, let's do that. But if we get the community involved in getting their input...
And their buy-in to the program.
Exactly. Then it's a better chance that that could actually fly. And keeping it to a minimum, I mean, maybe like $50 even to start it off, you know, per household, just a little pot to start.
I'm thinking even smaller. I think if you threw out...
Yeah, maybe 25 bucks.
If you threw out five or 10, that's three Starbucks. If you threw out $5 or $10 a house... How many houses do we have?
Four.
I think 11,000 or something like...
Do you remember what we talked... I don't have my other notes, but I can't remember what...
I believe there's over 30,000.
Oh, there. Times five, 150,000.
I think it's like 40,000, at least 40,000, I think.
A lot of those are apartment units, and that's not a bad target audience either, because oftentimes renters are not directly affected by a parcel tax.
Right.
Their landlords are.
It might get passed, but I'm thinking if it's even $5 or $10 to start with...
No, that's too much paperwork for 5, 10 bucks.
Yeah. You need to... Yeah, you need to make your money's worth, I mean, as far as on both ends. And so, I mean, I think I would say... I'm just rounding a number off, but really...
I wouldn't link at 20, but I would link at 50, being single and no face.
Maybe something in the middle.
Yeah, potentially. Potentially.
I think your idea about having some sort of community meetings and having a couple of proposals, maybe one at 50, maybe one at 25, and seeing what kind of reception one or both get. Maybe they would both be rejected. Maybe one would be strongly preferred. But I think if you give people a specific number to look at...
And also let the community know.
It's easier than just talking about increasing the tax, because that's...
Right.
Another thing to consider would be to define how long this tax is going to be in place, or how long the rate will remain. So the rate will not change for the next 10 years, or, you know, something along that line, so that people don't feel like it's the elephant's nose under the tent, and next year it's going to go way up, and, you know, that kind of thing. So if we can give them some specificity, then I think we'll get better input, and I think they'll be more comfortable giving us their opinion.
I agree. I agree. And on that note, I actually did meet with Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura. I did call a meeting with him. That was on February 7th, to kind of discuss this a little further. He has a little bit more of an insight on the libraries. He's been on the board before. And I was trying to get an understanding of what type of collaboration was held with the board and with the city when he was on the board, as far as ideas that he had worked on. Because I don't really know the background behind what projects were initiated and/or completed during his time and with the other board members. And so he had mentioned to me that there was a previous project entailing collaboration with the board, the city, and I think also with Phil Ting about the infrastructure for the Ceremony Library. I'm not sure if you remember anything like that, Phil?
I think that was before my time.
Okay. So apparently, they were trying to tap into getting some funding for the infrastructure of the Ceremony Library. I don't know if you were, maybe you were around? Do you? Correct. So that's what it led me to. But he said that apparently Phil Ting had reached out to him because there was some monies earmarked to help support the city. And so Ray reached out to him and said, you know, I would love to see the Ceremony Library have a better infrastructure. And if there's money to support that, then how do we go about doing that? And so I think there was a roundtable discussion at one point, and then it just kind of fell off the map, and it never pulled through. He doesn't really know what happened at that point. But if that is the case, and there are through the state, from the city and from the state, or even from the county and the state, if there are monies that can be solicited, I mean, that's another avenue to also consider, if there is some money, even if it's a small amount, that can be towards, you know, supporting the library. And that's just a matter of probably soliciting the offices accordingly, so...
Okay, so it sounds like funding, advocating for increased funding in some way, shape, or form is one of the ideas.
Mm-hmm.
Were there some others that you guys discussed?
That's actually kind of the two big ones, I think, that I was actually working on. I mean, there's probably a lot more, and I just haven't had the chance to kind of dive into most... A lot of other opportunities. But those are kind of the main two things right now that I've kind of focused on at this point, so...
Well, we talked, I think, about the trustees coming up with a set of talking points that we would use, that we could deliver a consistent, clear message, not only to the council, but to the community, you know, and anyone that we talk to about our situation. You know, that's something I would like to see us do. And it's not going to cost anything, except a little bit of time. And let me just go back to your idea, Tricia, your proposal. Joseph, could you, with Tricia's proposal in mind, take a look at a couple of different levels of, I'll call it taxation, and what amount of revenue that would generate, so that we've got something specific to work with?
Sure.
Because we don't want to waste our effort if it's not really going to help the library. But, you know, if you can do that, then we can see whether or not it might be worthwhile to pursue, or if it seems like a, you know, a bridge too far, that kind of thing. Would anyone... I mean, I'll volunteer myself to work on talking points. Would anyone like to work with me on that?
I'd volunteer myself as well.
Okay, super.
And we also need support and buy-in from with our city council folks, too, because they're the ones that make the ultimate approval.
Right.
Absolutely. So I think we would need to work both behind the scenes, you know...
Of course, yes.
As Tricia did with Ray, to discuss library issues, as well as in a public way at council meetings, and perhaps identify community groups, you know, PTAs, or Rotary Clubs, or business groups, or the chamber, and request a time when we could come and talk about the library, you know, its situation, using our talking points, and explaining what a difficult position the libraries are in right now, and making some recommendations to them in ways that they could support us, you know, calls to the council. You know, we can come up with other ideas as well. Does that seem reasonable? Okay. Shaila, you're capturing all of these great ideas.
It's recorded, yeah.
Okay. Because I may not remember until I see the minutes again. But Angela, we'll... I'll get in touch with you, and we'll set up a meeting, and, you know, we can come up with something.
Absolutely. In addition, and I know you're currently like working on, you know, the tax, you know, maybe we dig deeper as well and take a closer look at fundraisers, corporate sponsorships, you know, I'm pretty big on that, right? And maybe some pay-to-play ideas, right? Because obviously, we do do the same thing with recreation. I know I will pay, you know, a small fee for my daughter to go to the swimming lessons and the summer programs. Do we have anything like that in mind for the libraries?
It is a forever, forever free public library. So generally speaking, no. Now, within that, we could have a discussion about the types of things that are above and beyond what you would expect to find at a free public library, and, you know, maybe some of the programs that have been traditionally free, maybe.
Okay.
We recover costs for things like photocopies and that kind of stuff, but access to the library is forever free by decree, going way, way back.
Yeah. Access, for sure, but in terms of like activities that you all do, for example, you guys did like a pump... I think Wells Fargo volunteered, right? The pumpkin patch kind of, or...
On the car.
Jack-o'-lantern, yeah. And I believe that was free to the public, yeah? Okay. So, I mean, is that like, you know, I'm new to the board, so is that like unwritten rule, like we just don't charge for activities?
I think going back to what Joseph said, the library is considered like the free resource, and so anything underneath that...
That umbrella.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really to just to build the community, and especially for the folks that don't have that opportunity to be going out to these private events, you know, where you pay X amount of dollars to attend. This is an opportunity for underprivileged kids especially, an opportunity for them to get involved with the community.
I think your idea of looking at business and corporate sponsorships or engagement in some way is much more promising.
Yeah.
If we were to charge for individual events, even well-attended events, I suspect would not generate that much additional revenue.
Okay, right. I was just...
So it would be almost a veritance.
And they tend to be fairly low costs. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think this year, the pumpkins were donated.
Yeah, they were.
So we keep the expenses low, because the programs are free. But we could do an informal survey, too, to see if there's any area libraries that are charging for extras, extra activities and programs. But I have a feeling the answer is an overwhelming no around this part of the world.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, unfortunately.
Are there other questions or ideas from trustees?
No, not right now. I think we have some things to do, continue our... Joseph, do you need any of my assistance with regards to researching any of the...
I think it should be fairly simple, because we went through this exercise with Measure B.
Yes.
It's a simple math problem, the number of taxable parcels.
Right.
And then we can do a couple of scenarios at different levels.
Okay.
I do have a friend who works for a private corporation who's holding businesses, helping campaigns throughout California. And I might put a call to him, see if we can get some pro bono information.
That'd be awesome.
Usually, their starting point is they do a lot of phone polling, and they throw a whole array of scenarios and try to collect as much data and feedback as they can.
Of course, right.
In conversations with him, you know, we've talked about this very issue. He said in California, local measures to support libraries do really poorly. They're not impossible. South San Francisco was successful. Pacifica's last couple of attempts were not successful. Yeah, so, you know, a lot of it is the packaging, and who's voting, and what election is it? Daly City has a lot of renters, and, you know, maybe that's if we can get them... If they're out voting for some other energizing kind of office, you know, get their votes rolled in, it would certainly help. Among property owners in your neighborhood, I'm not surprised that it didn't...
Can we... Is it possible to also like float a bond or anything?
Yeah, Daly City traditionally has been risk and debt aversive.
Okay.
I think in the last 50 years, one of the only things that the city went out for bonds were with the construction of the improvements at the sewage treatment plant back in 1987.
Oh.
Debt is paid off, and that's one good thing about Daly City compared to some of our neighbors. We don't have a lot of debt from past projects, but we're allowed a lot of debt from future obligations, but...
Okay.
That's a possibility, too. In fact, it might be an easier...
Okay. We could look into that.
Okay. Tricia?
Yes.
Do you want to work with Joseph and come up with something that you would present at the next meeting?
Sure.
Or would you like Joseph to just handle that?
Either way, I mean...
We might be able to do it by email.
Yeah, I'm more than happy. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for the time and effort that you put into thinking about trustee advocacy for the libraries. And Lily, thank you for your time. And, you know, we'll continue the discussion and try and translate the discussion into action.
That's the point.
That is the plan.
Moving on to the mission statement of the library board. I think I sent that out to everyone?
Yes.
And, no, you didn't receive it? You guys didn't receive it? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought somehow.
I got a copy of it.
I thought it, well, let's see if I can find it here.
I searched for it and couldn't find it.
Okay, the mission statement was in the minutes, excuse me. It was an action item to be adopted on February 15th, 2005. And it reads, "The following mission statement has been created by the Board of Trustees to formalize their charge to the library and the, and community. The Daly City Library Board of Trustees, in its advisory role, shall advocate literacy for all ages and all people, communicate constituent needs to the city council and library staff, and facilitate fulfillment of the library's future needs and vision." So, we had talked about a mission statement for the library. Is this a good one for us to reaffirm? Or is this something that we would like to take a look at and tweak? Add something to, maybe strengthen, or take something out?
I remember when I read it, I was fine with it. Nothing flagged or hit me. But then, that was a few weeks ago, so, just reading it now, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, thanks. Well, I mean, I don't think we should change it just because it was passed back in 2005, if we're satisfied with the way it is now. You know, in a way, our work's been done for us, or at least the preliminary step. The hardest step is getting the first thing down on paper. And we not only have that, but we have something that was adopted. Other thoughts or comments?
To me, it was fine. When you, I think you emailed to me, so, and I did take a look at it, and it was fine. I didn't, like Lynn, I didn't have any like alarming, like words didn't pop out at me that I felt were inappropriate and/or un.
Unacceptable, but no, I didn't get that.
Unreachable, yeah.
Angela, Lily, any thoughts?
It sounds good.
I think I want something a little bit more compelling. I'm just saying, something, maybe something stating something about community. Just certain addiction that would grasp my attention. But still, very, because it's very professional.
Yeah.
But I think if we're really going to activate as like a community, we've got to be compelled. So, that's just my two cents. Maybe we each kind of tweak it and then come together?
We could take another look at it again and present it the next meeting if you feel like there's, if you feel that there is some.
It just sounds very professional, and that's it.
It doesn't sound like a bad description.
Do you know what I'm getting, what I hear you saying is, we're all at different age levels, but the younger kids are looking for something that pops. I'm not calling you a younger kid, but you're the youth.
Right.
Younger generation.
And I think that they do look for something. I can't say that I know what to add to make it, but I'm happy to hear anything you've got. And, I mean, I can go home and look up some words or, you know, whatever else my nephews or something like that. But I hear what you're saying.
Well, what about coming up with some language that, you know, you would ideally like to see added? And then sending it to Shayla and having her send it out to all of us to react to? And then we can come back and talk about whether or not we want to modify it? Or leave it as is? I think the strength of a mission statement, especially in terms of what we've been discussing, is that this would be something that we could talk about. You know, the role of the library is to advocate for literacy, represent, well, it's more the board. Actually, it's probably, if somebody asked what the Board of Trustees does, that would cover it, I think. But that might not come up. In any case, if you would think about it, and if you want to suggest something, send it to Shayla and then it would be forwarded. Joseph?
I was gonna say, we do have a department mission statement. And I have that on a slide if you want, just for context. I know the mission, the mission statement you're talking about would be specifically for the trustees, but.
Yeah, the other thing that I would just mention is that this was adopted. So currently, this is our mission statement. And, you know, it's just what do we want to have as we go forward?
How does it get adopted, Bill?
At a regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, so it's just amongst, it's, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was sending it out more than that, so that's fine.
You know, by the board back then.
Yeah.
And it was put on the agenda as an action item, and it was approved.
So there it is. It's.
Oh, there you go, Angela.
Our department.
I guess, you know, well, obviously, right? I, I work for a bank and we have our mission statement, and it's pretty long. And there, you will hear things like community visions, values, things of that nature. But this, this looks good. And I didn't know there were, you know, there was two. So if we're looking professionally, obviously, the addiction that they're using, it's okay. But if we're looking for something compelling, this actually looks pretty compelling.
So this is being used for both library and parking wreck?
Yeah, for the entire department.
So this is, yeah, this is exactly what you were talking about. So this is something you could serve as, or present out, out to the community? Whereas this is more like a, more of the.
The board of.
Yes, yes.
Your mission, make sure that happens, yeah.
So that works, yeah. That one, I like the way that, that reads.
Yeah, I see them as being pretty compatible. Is supporting that.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, well Angela, do you have something that you want?
No, I, no, so I think they actually go hand in hand, right? I was thinking of community visions, values, but I'm, I'm more than happy to share both.
Okay. Well, I apologize, Joseph and Shayla, for not sending this to you. I will do it tomorrow or the next day. How about sticking this on our Board of Trustees', you know, website?
Oh, cool.
Okay, any other discussion on that item?
No, check.
Let's see. So, election of officers would be the next item for discussion. Shayla mentioned to me, and there was, actually Shayla, why don't you go ahead and talk about electing officers in January versus electing officers in June? Or, excuse me, July?
In the time that I've been here, the practice has been to elect officers for the Library Board of Trustees in July, which is interesting because then that's opposite of when there's reorganization in city council. But I know that we had a great deal of turnover, when there was turnover in city council. And so, Mr. Lex came into the role of president at an unusual time. So I know we had discussed whether we should realign when, when the election of officers takes place. It would have the advantage of being around the same time that council reorganizes. Or, or if we should continue the practice. And then, at that point, I know that, Mr. Lex, you, you brought up the bylaws for the board, which does actually specify that it does take place in July.
Right. So if we want to, I mean, from my perspective, if we want to change the date when we elect officers, reorganize our board to coincide with city council, then we would have to propose an amendment to our current bylaws. As Shayla said, traditionally, we've done July because I think the summer is a lull period. And then we start with the new president, you know, in August and kind of.
It's also the start of our fiscal year.
Okay, well, there's another point.
Otherwise, then December?
Well, I think it'll be January.
January.
Skip January, December.
So what, what are the thoughts?
I'm fine with July.
Okay, it was July? Is that all right?
I guess so. I mean, do we, do we want it to be choppy in the sense that it's one versus the other versus having it clear across every?
Is it every year?
I don't think it matters. I mean, it's, it's been like this for a long, long time.
Well, trustees serve for three years. So, but that's a separate thing, you know, that's an appointment by the council. Versus the president and vice president of the board, which is elected by the board.
And we don't interact with the city council on a super regular basis anyway, so. And they know each of us that they have appointed, so I don't think it would, that it makes much difference to them. So, you know, when we change it, so.
Okay, well, hearing no strong opinions in favor of changing it, I will take that as an affirmation of the current bylaws, which states that we will reorganize and elect a president and vice president in July.
Okay.
All right, let's see what's next. A report from the Daly City Public Library Associates. Okay, well, we had a long meeting. The last meeting of DCPLA was on January 23rd. It began with a financial statement, and as of November 2017, there was approximately $52,000 in their budget. Expected expenses in the budget for 2018 is $63,000 with an estimated income of $71,200, which would provide a positive balance of $8,200. The Events Committee reported on a number of activities coming up, or passed. For example, the Moonstar fundraiser generated income of about $2,700. So that was very good. St. Patrick's Day is coming up, March 13th.
Everybody going to the luncheon?
At the Colma Community Center. Adrienne Tissier is asking for people who want to be or willing to be servers or volunteer in other capacities to work that morning. Crazy About Cars in Colma is a project led by Jane Chambers. And that committee is continuing to plan for, do you guys recall when? I want to say October. I don't have it, I think there's a date that they're targeting in October, but I don't recall what it is or was.
Can you clarify what that function?
Well, yeah, someone brought up, DCPLA is always looking for ways to raise money. So somebody suggested to organize a Pinewood Derby. Do you guys know what a Pinewood Derby is?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't.
Well, actually, it was a Soapbox Derby. I take it back. I'm sorry. Soapbox Derby was the first idea. You know, where people build little cars with wheels. There are some specifications, and you basically get everybody, not everybody, but heats, where the cars are lined up, and then they all start and they roll down the street, you know, or a hill. And whoever wins, then goes on.
There are no brakes on them, but your feet.
There were a number of concerns, including insurance, about that event. So the next thought was, okay, let's organize a Pinewood Derby, which is where you build small cars, small model cars, and you run them down an inclined plane. And that evolved, wasn't abandoned, but was expanded into this Crazy Cars in Colma idea, where the car dealerships in Colma would be sort of enlisted in this project as sponsors, and that it would be a show involving lots of souped-up cars, restored cars, historic cars. Cars, right, that would bring people in from far and near. And they're a little uncertain in terms of how to monetize the event. But Jane and her committee are kind of enthused about this, so they continue to work on it and refine the idea. They do have, and I don't recall the details, some commitments of cooperation in terms of having an area where it can be held. And some participants, they do feel that the auto dealers will be interested in supporting it. They would hope to make this an ongoing event if it's successful. So, that's my best description. Shayla, Joseph, do you have anything?
I, I attended something for the American Cancer Society last year. It was at Jefferson High School. And they had all the sports cars and whatever cars there, and had some food trucks out there. And I think the Ford dealership had some cars out there too. So that might be, it was roomy enough to have the cars and guests in a parking lot and something. So in case they're looking for a place, Jefferson High School.
They found a place, they think.
They did?
Yes, yeah, they're good. Another event coming up on February 20th, well, that's today. It's complex, 6:07.30, right, the authors talk, I know.
Apologize about that. They said they didn't check the calendar, knowing that we had our meeting this evening, otherwise we'd be there.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Especially Susan emailing, "You're coming?" I said, "No, I can't."
And they're still looking for a part-time events person, you know, who can take over that, that planning and organizing function for DCPLA. In terms of membership, there's a community-wide drive to retain existing members and to recruit new members with the goal that every Daly City Board or Commission member will join DCPLA, and a goal to double the membership from 250 to 500. So that's ambitious, but it would really be good for the organization since it is a member-supported group. Communications Committee is working to develop clear, consistent messages about DC libraries and the need for external support. So this coincides very nicely with the idea that we would have talking points, things that we would carry out into the community. It would be similar or not necessarily identical, but certainly work in collaboration with what DCPLA was saying. The Executive Director's Report covered a number of items. The Westlake Branch Dropbox, the book Dropbox, has been funded. $5,000 was allocated from DCPLA funds to complete the project. Has that been ordered?
We haven't actually received the funds.
Oh, that's right, okay. Well.
We, we are scheduled to accept those funds Monday night at the city council meeting.
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, Susan just sent out an email, I think, to the board members, encouraging board members to be at the council meeting on Monday for that reason. Thank you. Tom Norris is our current president, and he's working to revive the Daly City Council Subcommittee on Libraries, which hasn't met for some time. The town of Colma donated $2,000 for children's books. And Shayla is going to coordinate the date. Is this the date, this coming Monday? Where that money will be presented to the council. Seton Medical Center, let me put it a different way. A grant application was sent to Seton Medical Center for $5,000. And there has not been a decision, or there wasn't a decision as of the meeting date. DCPLA revised its bylaws, increasing the number of potential members on the board. And those have been sent to the attorney for redrafting. One thing that made Susan very happy is that in the future, donated books can now be stored at the Seton Medical Center Library. And finally, a grant for $3,000 was submitted to Wells Fargo for children's books.
Thank you, Wells.
Well, it was submitted.
They always say yes.
Well, we hope, yeah. Well, we hope, yeah. I don't know if Susan had it, or if Chayla presented, or Joseph presented, but DCPLA went to the library staff and leadership to request the items that they would like to have funded by the... By DCPLA this year, and to identify the three items that would be Fund and Need projects presented at the St. Patrick's Day lunch. So one is a... Actually, there were five requests, and the first three are the ones that will be presented at St. Patrick's Day. The first is a new early literacy station, actually, three stations. The preliminary cost was estimated to be around $3,300 apiece for a total of $10,050. The second item was three new seats at the Westlake Branch on the rear wall where electronic devices could be plugged in and people could work, so that would increase the workspace and access to power. That would be about $3,500. And then the purchase of either laptops or Chromebooks for checking out in the library for in-library use, looking at a dozen. If they were laptops, they would be about $700 apiece for a total of $8,500. If they were Chromebooks, they would be considerably less expensive. The cost of a Chromebook is about 25% that of a laptop. So I don't know if there's...
It's a difference between a laptop and a Chromebook.
Chayla, you explained it well.
Well, the laptop is going to be running... Oh, sorry. A laptop will be running a full operating system, in this case, probably Windows 10. And so it often will have a drive for an optical disc, and it's going to have full applications like Microsoft Office applications on it. Whereas a Chromebook is running... It's essentially the Chrome browser.
Just the internet, basically.
On a piece of more affordable hardware. It is actually something that's commonly done by some of our neighboring libraries, and I did actually meet with staff at the San Bruno Library who have an active and successful program lending them out, and they have advocated for not just the Chromebooks, but for wireless hotspots as well. So I'm reworking, trying to figure out how far that money could be spread, and then I'll speak with DCPLA to see if that meets with the, you know, the overall purpose of that request, so.
So a Chromebook, maybe you couldn't put Word and...
No. Everything is web-based.
Okay.
It's all web-based.
Okay.
Yeah. There's advantages and disadvantages.
That still goes like this, you know? Sorry.
They are much more affordable, but it is, you know, it's a lesser quality.
I saw it at Costco the other day, and I was wondering why it was...
Yeah. They're very, very affordable, but a little bit limited, and maybe not as approachable for someone with less technical savvy, but very affordable, which would allow them to potentially be checked out rather than just for use in library, which is a huge thing, particularly in some of our neighborhoods that now are served by libraries that aren't open as often as we'd like. Or hardly at all.
I will say, they do do the job, the Chromebooks.
Oh, yeah. For what the kids need, yeah.
Yeah.
And a huge portion of what I see people doing on computers in the library, of course, is just surfing the internet. And it's perfectly suited to that.
Okay. Thanks for the break.
Two additional items were requested that are not going to be part of Fund and Need. One is to support STEM materials to update the collection, 50 to 75 titles for about $5,000. And the final item was to place an automatic defibrillator in each branch. The cost of the individual items is $1,800. So four of those would be $7,200. I made a report on our last meeting to DCPLA. Their next meeting is Tuesday, February 27. The location was to be determined.
Ceremony.
Ceremony? Okay, very good. Thank you. And then we adjourned to the children's room because we were meeting at the Bay Shore Library for a ribbon-cutting ceremony for an upgrade in that area sponsored by the Dan Ford Foundation, PGE, South San Francisco Rotary, and DCPLA.
Nice.
So it's a great meeting. And some of us were there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Those who didn't have to work.
Any questions?
People were kind of lunch-putting.
Sorry to take so long. It was just a lot of stuff that we covered. Okay.
Well, it's getting very active there.
Other announcements and communications?
Very quickly. You mentioned earlier the importance of partnering with some of the local community groups. The Lions Club, Daly City Host Lions Club, happens to be coming here this Thursday evening for a speech contest. Might be an opportunity to see some gifted young high school-age speakers and make some connections with the Lions Club. It's 6 o'clock this Thursday here in the council chambers. And then I also wanted to put a plug in for our 13th Annual Women's History Month celebration. The month of March will be proclaimed Women's History Month in Daly City. And on Thursday, March 1, Mayor Jesslyn Manalo will be speaking at that event, as will Chief Susan Mannheimer. She's the only woman chief in San Mateo County, chief of police in the city of San Mateo. And then following that presentation, there will be a free screening of the movie Hidden Figures. Again, that is Thursday, March 1, in the council chambers, beginning at 5:30 PM. And I believe there will be snacks and light refreshments, I think is the word we use. Light refreshments, not dinner, but some finger food.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements or communications? Agenda building for the next meeting. Let's continue to have a budget update item, please, for the director's report, as well as anything else you would like to add to that. And I don't know if it's... How do we put it? Advocacy committee discussion so that we can continue that discussion. Tricia and Joseph will bring back the work that they've done. Angela and I will bring back the work that we've done. Are there any other agenda items that trustees or staff would like to place on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none and seeing no members of the public present at the moment, I'll assume there's no public comment.
We're here to go. Who is our guest?
Family support.
Waiting for dinner.
Okay. Well, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.